I'd like to call this meeting under the authority of the Council of Order. Mary Jo, Kathy Kuchin, Eric Borowski, Kevin Hanski, Sue Rohrman, Yes, and Brian Shaki, Yes, David Coyle, Andy Sullivan.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, started in ten minutes.
Yeah.
What? Everything seen from the front of everyone in the back.
Ah, he's up, ma.
Hi, yo. Time left. I'd like to call this meeting under the authority of the Council of Order. Mary Jo, Kathy Kuchin, Eric Borowski, Kevin Hanski, Sue Rohrman, Yes, and Brian Shaki, Yes, David Coyle, Andy Sullivan.
Yes.
Exclaiming the platteled.
The United States of America is a free and equal, for which it stands, a nation, a God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and love.
I'd like to offer a brief moment of silence to recognize Memorial Day next Monday, and in remembrance of men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice defending our feelings. Thank you. I'm gonna turn it over to Mayor McRae this time for opening remarks. And the swearing-in of our new firefighters, Mrs. Armstrong, Logan Davis, and Peter Sockel.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I wanted to welcome everyone to the new city center building. Right here in the city of Brooklyn, this has been a long time in coming, and so it's good to finally see that the building is completed. Want to thank those that were directly involved in putting this together. Then Chief, how many are in process? Pretty clear talking about this. Early 2000s, mid-2000s, we began this process, and it's been nice to see it come to fruition. And of course, the residents of Brooklyn have taken the two deep wins. Welcome to the first meeting here at Council Chambers. So at this time, we're gonna have the swearing-in of our three new firefighters. We'll begin with James Armstrong will be first, then Logan Davis, and Peter Sockel. James or Will, let's see. Can you repeat your name again? Hi, James Armstrong.
Hi, James Armstrong.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Brooklyn.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Brooklyn.
That I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
That I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Discharge my duties as a firefighter paramedic.
Discharge my duties as a firefighter paramedic.
In the city of Brooklyn, Ohio.
In the city of Brooklyn.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best.
I will. Oh, we got that. I will.
Can you just repeat your name again? Hi, Logan Davis.
Hi, Logan Davis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Brooklyn.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Brooklyn.
That I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
That I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Discharge my duties as a firefighter paramedic.
Discharge my duties as a firefighter paramedic.
In the city of Brooklyn, Ohio.
In the city of Brooklyn.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Guess this will be at first.
Was here?
Daddy. See.
Uh-oh. I'm Peter Sockel.
I'm Peter Sockel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Brooklyn.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Brooklyn.
That I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
That I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Discharge my duties as a firefighter paramedic.
Discharge my duties as a firefighter paramedic.
In the city of Brooklyn, Ohio.
In the city of Brooklyn, Ohio.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations, guys, on board. We now have our minute to approve from the April 24th regular meeting.
Can you recognize?
Yes.
I'm just going to do section, um, page two, third paragraph, um, how the words only go through point, second line, and the line should be, set to withdraw. It should be, they need to be. So that's, that should be, that's right.
To approve the minute, has the minute been adjusted? Aaron Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Hanski?
Yes.
Sue Rohrman?
Yes.
And Brian Shaki?
Yes.
David Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Sullivan?
Yes.
At this time, we'll have a poll session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say, needs to an item on the agenda, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments within five minutes or less. We'll now have reports of committee submissions and boards. We will start this evening with the Recreation Board, Officer.
Thank you. Senior Center List of Events, May 24th, Parades Watch Party at the Senior Center, 1:00 p.m. at Old Garden. Says that a lunch will be available for $1, hot dogs for $2. June 1st, Independence Day T-shirt craft, bring a red, white, or blue t-shirt at 9:30 a.m., costs $8. June 5th, one day, June 23rd, Friday, for Summer Park, Locky. 1:00 p.m. into my port park or sign up at the Senior Center for a ride to Parkport, slightly less than a mile, group walking, change shelter, and restaurants available. June 7th, food demo by Business Prains, 11:30 a.m., free lunch will be served. June 13th, Senior Care Animal, open forum with several branches of professionals to discuss senior issues in care, law, health, nutrition, non-medical home care, discussing the question of such and such. Signing begins from June 21st. Lunch and learn with Business Prains from 11 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. free. June 27th, come enjoy a regular action sponsored by Spry Senior Primary Care, costs $10, 12 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. To register, call 216-635-4222, or visit the Brooklyn Senior Center. Also, Memorial Day break kicks off at 11 a.m. on Monday, May 29th. Recreation Board meetings for June, July, and August are canceled. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Cooper liaison, Councilor Borowski.
Thank you, Council President. This past Tuesday, the school board met for one of their regular meetings, and the meeting is online as usual. The superintendent and the board members also turned to congratulating the graduates of the high school, and I would like to also add to that as well. I wish these kids all the best luck in their future endeavors, be it military, college, or the workforce. Some of the items that the board addressed was the new administrators that were recently hired and or promoted. A big congratulations goes out to the new high school principal, Mr. Larson, and the new vice principal, Ms. Herger, as well as the new vice principal at the elementary school, Mr. DeAngelo. The board also addressed matters pertaining staff approvals, approving financial statements, and approving work contracts with companies such as Holland Paving and the Forep. And just today, almost 200 students from the Brooklyn High School participated in the volunteer cleanup working across the county, as partnered with Key Brooklyn Beautiful and the city. So once again, to all of those that volunteered, thanks to all of those that were involved. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Domestic Abuse Commission, our next Domestic Abuse Commission meeting this Wednesday at the Brooklyn branch of the library will be meeting at 6:00 to hear from guest speakers Fallon Rannigan and Commander David Fertier from the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force at the Chaihoga County Prosecutor's Office. They will talk to us about sex abortion and how to keep everyone safe on the internet. This discussion is relevant for both parents of teens and teenagers themselves, and honestly, people of all ages who use the internet. All are welcome to attend, hope to see you there. And next up, we have the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, Councilwoman McRae.
Thank you. The Board of Zoning Appeals met on May 18th to approve a request for construction resource fund for four-foot variance to an allowable six-foot for a fence gap on American Road, and this was approved contingent upon engineered gap plans. The next meeting will be June 15th at 6:00 p.m. The Planning Commission has not met for the last few months due to lack of applications. So there is a tentative, the next tentative we scheduled on is Wednesday, 7:00 at 6:00 p.m. if there are no applications, but that one will be also canceled. And all meetings are now in our new building, so 8,000 methods admin. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Ben, we have the Committee of the Whole. The Committee of the Whole meeting met today at 6:15, first one at the U C Hall Building. We did go over legislation, and I'll go into a little further detail when we read them into the record before voting. Council did recommend adopting both ordinances that are out for adoption tonight, and one is also on first reading. We did also vote into executive session for purpose of considering public employment. And Committee of the Whole meets at 6:15 before all regularly scheduled council meetings during council chambers, all are welcome to attend. We'll now have a report of council. We will begin this evening with Councilwoman Kuchin.
Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to the annual meeting in the annual facility. As I mentioned before, this is something that our entire community can be proud of, and it's gonna serve us well, your department, to the future. The official ribbon cutting is tomorrow, Tuesday, May 23rd at 11 a.m., and then there will be a community open house on Saturday, July 22nd, from 9:00 to 12:00 a.m. I'd also like to welcome our newest firefighters, Armstrong, Davis, and Sockel. I know firsthand what Big Davis is for you and your families, who are joining the finest group of dedicated firefighters around. I wish you all a long, safe, and satisfying career in our city. I'd like to thank the Royal Garden Club and Friends of the Library for hosting the program on native plants. The president from the master garden organization also touched a little bit on rain gardens. It was very informative, and I had a similar experience to that, that Councilwoman McRae mentioned at the last meeting, and that was I was able to meet up and see some friends that I haven't seen since COVID, so that was a nice bonus. I would also like to congratulate our Brooklyn High School graduates, and also all the students in our community who are graduating from other schools. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilor Borowski.
Thank you. As mentioned, the new city center, where we're all sitting right now, ribbon cutting ceremony will take place at 11 a.m. tomorrow. We hope to see as many of you as possible. I hope all the mothers in Brooklyn had a wonderful Mother's Day, the weekend of it. The weather was absolutely wonderful for it. To all of those that were able to join in on the Key Brooklyn Beautiful cleanup this past weekend, thank you. I've participated in some in the past, and know the personal rewarding feeling of being able to give back and do a little community service. It's a great way to draw attention to waste and litter, and ensures a big chance of you defining our neighborhood. It's a simple way to get involved, and I encourage others when able, participate. And as I mentioned in my school board report, I want to wish all the students graduating from Brooklyn a wonderful and safe summer, and those that are heading off from the military, college, and workforce, good luck and God bless. And a big welcome and a stay safe to our newly sworn firefighters. And please, this upcoming Monday, as we celebrate Memorial Day, even if it's in the silence of your heart, please remember those that laid down their lives so that we can enjoy our time together. They're not here, they laid down their lives not only for our city, our state, but most importantly, for our country. So please remember that this Monday. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hanski?
Thank you. Welcome to the three new firefighters of the city of Brooklyn's fire department. Would also like to congratulate all the Brooklyn High School graduates, class 2023. Good luck to all the students, and much success in the future and the coming years. Second thing is, I'm gonna have to dig with the mayor and John Burrow. We put up with a lot of stress and unrest, Ridge Road and the sand, when they tore that up full depth, from Bridge Park Square all the way up. But I have seen nothing of keeping up their street. In other words, crack ceiling. That road is starting to chip up, and if you look down the lines of it, it's starting to come apart in some places. Who is supposed to maintain Ridge Road? Maintenance said, is it thrown in this city, or is it the county? I don't know if the mayor or John can answer that, because nothing's been done. So we've put up with that mess on Ridge Road and that traffic, as we are now, on the other half. I'd like to see how that's gonna be maintained, or are we just gonna let this tax money go to waste and not maintain these streets? And that's a lot of money, Ridge Road, and a lot of test. So mayor or John, if you can tell me who's supposed to maintain Ridge Road?
Testing. Uh, we're exactly, I mean, right now, obviously, we do not want to cause any more traffic on Ridge Road, so I'm not exactly sure, are you talking the section from Memphis to Bedoff? Or what is that?
Although we only have a new section from actually where the construction started down, going north, to where all that new full depth came in of concrete, and it pretty much goes all the way up to Bedoff, doesn't it, farther, before it becomes overlay? I'm not sure. But nothing was.
We could get money through the county to crack seal that, and then we'll do it ourselves. It's just what all they can get you right now, we're not gonna do that at this time.
Right, well, I get it. So. But if that could be done, we can look into that. So all those lines could crack seal from one end of the street to the other end, from the east end to the west end.
Yeah. Yeah, we could do that, we just have to coordinate that with the county.
Will they pick up the labor and the material?
Uh, just the material.
So we'd have to pick up, yeah. Because the county cracked seal it all, will they help out around?
They could, we'd have to go under their maintenance agreement, it's just easier for us to do it.
Okay. Wishing all the residents very happy and safe Memorial Day. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman McRae?
Thank you. What an exciting first meeting, to be here in our brand new city hall and install three police officers. That shows that this administration, our previous administration, this city council, previous city councils are being very careful, sorry, fire, always a standard little note, and have watched the budget very carefully, have had to make difficult cuts when necessary, but have always looked at the future, and I think we see the future beginning here today. So I know I'm extremely proud to watch the three new firefighters be installed today, and also see that the fire station is going to be returned to previous staffing numbers. It is something that the previous city council members wished, we wished, we waited until it was the right time financially, and we were able to do it. So I'm very proud to be part of that. Also, congratulations to our 2023 graduates. It's an exciting time for families. It seems like the blink of an eye, it was my time, even though the years are rolling on quickly. I loved seeing all of the pictures from prom on social media. Thank you to the parents, and thank you to the students, students for passing those along for those of us who are now on the sidelines watching. And I'm just going to add also a little bit about Memorial Day. This past February, during Black History Month, I came across a picture book that gave a little bit of the history of Memorial Day, and I found it very fascinating, and it's short, so I'd like to share it with you tonight. The origin of Memorial Day has never been completely established. We do know that the observation began soon after the Civil War ended, so it is something that has been celebrated in our country for a long time. In the late 1860s, Americans in various towns and cities began holding springtime tributes to countless fallen soldiers, decorating their graves with flowers and reciting prayers. There are some records that show that one of the earliest Memorial Day ceremonies was organized by a group of formerly enslaved people in Charleston, South Carolina, less than one month after the Confederacy was rendered in 1865. I think that's a little known note, that that is where a lot of evidence of the beginnings of Memorial Day lies. So in 1966, the federal government just declared Waterloo, New York, the official birthplace of Memorial Day, even though we have some records that show that isn't quite accurate. But either way, here we are, 2023, and we all, of course, thank our veterans. I also like to think of our active service members, especially as I've seen the service members banners on social media and around our city, their families, always their families too, for all their sacrifice and their continued sacrifice. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Coyle?
Good evening, everyone. After so many years of discussion and planning, it's so great to finally be here in our beautiful new city center, Council Chambers. Please join us all tomorrow at ceremonial ribbon cutting to recognize the special occasion. Congratulations and welcome to our three new firefighters. I want to wish them each, or each one of them, a long, successful future with the department. The Charter Review Commission is making progress on the discussions regarding the current state of the country. Their next meeting is here tomorrow night from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. It's busy Tuesday night, and there's also a meeting at the Historical Society starting at 7:00 p.m. I'm looking forward to the presentation regarding the history of the House of Earth. This past Saturday was Armed Forces Day, the White House recognized the day of the proclamation. It had currently vested in 1% of Americans wearing the uniform, stepping up to defend the other 99% of our nation in honoring her. This year marks the 50th anniversary of our all-volunteer force and the 75th anniversaries of a desegregated military and women's integration. We are reminded that our armed forces are stronger and more capable than ever because of the diverse range of skill sets and experiences of our service members. That said, I just want to take a moment to thank all the brave men and women from Brooklyn who are currently serving in our armed forces all across the globe. So, update on the Historical Society, when it may be turning first. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Soltzer?
Thank you. My condolences to the family of Lieutenant Eschweiler in passing of Maria Eschweiler, also my condolences to Russ over at the Recreation Center in passing of the system. Thank you to Chief Melkey, and also to Tom Brusak, who are getting ready from the garage, on getting the no parking signs installed to help alleviate the parking situation on Brooklyn. There were no no parking signs on the hybrid side, with the exception of one by the very last utility pole that worked at all. Situation. Situation I hope that resolves one day. Thank you. Another thank you to Chief Brian Hare, principal of Brooklyn High School, and his staff in helping today with one hundred ninety-five students. We had work on the same day as second Annual Community Service Day. Work was performed at Brooklyn Point, the Avenue of Brooklyn, the Historical Society, the library, Memorial Playground, the Recreation Center, the Senior Center, and a number of residential homes throughout Brooklyn. Welcome to the three new firefighters. It's always nice to see them in school and especially with their families. It's well touching. And now they're part of a new family also, so I wish them long, successful, safe careers. Congratulations to the graduates of two thousand twenty-three from Brooklyn High School. Quick short chapter on LEDs. Thirty-one watt LED Cobra heads have come in for the residential street, so it should be starting to look forward now to that. As you heard, the Little Garden Club had an event, the second of two events at the library on May seventeen, the native plants. Based on the response from those attending, there will be two additional sessions, one in July and one in August. We'll also be announcing a home decorating contest by, sponsored by Keep Brooklyn Beautiful shortly. The next fresh fruit and produce giveaway at St. Elias's tomorrow, Tuesday. It starts at three thirty P M. Depending on when the delivery truck gets here and if the distribution itself can be set up, it may start a little earlier, but please connect if they're one or two hours ahead of time. Clean updates, as you heard, from Keep Brooklyn Beautiful are up on volunteer at K A B dot forums website. Look for Brooklyn. You should find us. There are a number of events that are always good for community service hours. Thank you for my report.
Thank you. We do have a couple things to add. Mostly, most of it's been mentioned tonight. Just a big congratulations and welcome to the three new firefighters, our strong Davis and Soco, who are sworn in today. It is, it is an exciting and good time for the City of Brooklyn. We welcome you aboard. Thank you to every employee who helped move into this new building that we're sitting tonight. I know that it was delayed. I know that it's still a little bit of a work in progress, but it's very exciting officially to be here in the new city hall. And I know how difficult a office move is and to a whole new building. Thank you to everybody who had to help me out in that big project. Keep Brooklyn Beautiful has held two more cleanups since their last closing. I do want to thank all the dedicated volunteers who come out and give up a couple of their hours on a weekend morning to help keep our community clean. I also want to give a shout out and thank you to Starbucks on Tideman who offered to give our volunteers free coffee or tea a week ago as we cleaned up around their area on Tideman Road. And there is talk about them potentially doing something like that in the future with their volunteers as well. Keep you updated. Our next cleanup is on Saturday, June eleventh at Memorial Park. And this morning, I did spend with Brooklyn Point with our student, high school students, helping out with the Community Service Day. A big thank you to the time that Councilman Seltzer and Principal Hare spent on putting this large project together with nearly a hundred and fifty students from our high school. Multiple locations, a lot of logistics, maybe there's enough chaperones, but it was a fun morning and it really seemed to be a good day within it. So thank you for that. And that ends my report. I'm going to turn it over to the mayor, Mayor Hare.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to thank Chief Paul for the process that he's gone through with firefighters. I sat down with each and individually with the chief and find out that all three of them. So very glad to have them onboard. Mr. Selber has mentioned his visiting family down at the fire station. We're very happy to have them. Finally, it's a long process they're going through. That's my first time doing that, but we're very happy to have them onboard. They will serve the city very, very well. The ribbon cutting ceremony has been mentioned several times. It is eleven A M., so a lot of people work during that time. So we are going to have an open house on a Saturday, which will take place July twenty-second. And so we'll get tours of the facility from nine A M. to noon. I look forward to welcoming many residents to the city at that time. Congratulations again to the class of two thousand twenty-three. I'm looking forward to attending graduation this Friday. I appreciate the invite from the principal and from the superintendent. And so congratulations to all of our graduates, whether you're from the high school or any other school, resident of our city. Pinzika has taken ownership of the old city hall building. They are currently conducting the abatement process. The demolition is set to begin in the early part of next month with construction of the new library slated to begin sometime in early July. All of the Veterans Memorial Plaza monuments have been relocated to the new property. They are currently taped off with caution tape. They're sitting next to the plane. They will remain there until the construction of new park begins. That should take place in the next two weeks. The memorial benches and the star memorials are being housed in the service garage until the installation of that new park. Chief Melkey has begun the process this week of interviewing candidates for police officer hires. And so he'll be doing that this week and again next week, and we hope to hire several officers here in the weeks to come. The royal landscaping portion of the I forty given quadrants is completed. Oil will continue to water the plants and trees through June at night, and the city will take over from there. The concrete pavement repair locations are being marked and the sidewalk removal locations will be marked by the service department have been. Repair work will begin on the concrete portion of the city roads project on June the fifth. Those routes include Archmere, Forest Edge Drive, Elizabeth Lane, and Brookwood Drive. And then sidewalks will include with those streets also Southwood, Traymore, and West Sixty-Sixth. The asphalt repair work began on Wednesday, May sixteenth, will conclude by the end of June, and that is for West Sixty-Sixth and Traymore. We've talked a lot about the turn lane construction that was supposed to take place from Memphis to Tideman. That is delayed while utilities get moved, C D I gets some holes. However, all the utilities need to be moved from there. Additionally, there are underground utilities that need to be addressed. And so we'll keep you updated as that project moves forward. A little bit of an update on the Ridge Road reconstruction. Beginning today, Flowerdale, which is in Cleveland, will be closed for thirty days. Traffic both entering and exiting Ridge Road. Beginning next Monday, May twenty-ninth, the Ridge Road I forty eastbound entrance ramp will be closed for twenty days with all traffic. Also on that day, the signalized entrance for Sabres Plaza will be closed for twenty days to all traffic entering or exiting the plaza on Ridge Road. They are moving very quickly on that project and the anticipated date of completion is sometime in August. As far as Brook Park Road construction update, the paving work has begun in our city. They started on the far west side of Brook Park Road and are moving east. This construction will be in our city for most of the summer. However, the construction zones on Brook Park Road and the construction on Ridge Road will not intersect. The city has requested and ODOT has agreed to not move the Ridge Road section of Brook Park Road until the Ridge Road construction is complete, so they should not intersect with each other. The indoor pool's style replacement project is supposed to be completed this Friday, May twenty-sixth. And of course, the indoor pool is closed as a result of that. However, the outdoor pool is open and there have been actually a lot of people in that pool this weekend. Shocked by Monday with fifty-eight degrees and there are people swimming in, but it is open. The bridge that's to be installed across the creek in Veterans Memorial Park was delivered today and will be installed tomorrow and Wednesday of this week. And the rest of those trails in the bottom portion of the park will be paved shortly thereafter. As I already mentioned, I do want to thank the Brooklyn High School students who participated in the community outreach today. There were a hundred ninety-five students that helped out in various locations across Brooklyn. And this is a joint partnership between the city schools, the City of Brooklyn, and of course, Keep Brooklyn Beautiful. So I appreciate the hard work by all of the individuals. Lastly, an additional reminder for Memorial Day. That will take place, the ceremony will take one place from today. Again, because of the construction across the street, the parade will begin right here at the rec center. It will reverse down its normal route and will head to the Brooklyn Stadium, where a ceremony will be held. There are details posted on the city's website. Looking forward to seeing a lot of people out. Early forecast looks good of this coming Monday. So report to that. I also want to thank Mr. Herbert and his service workers for doing an outstanding job hanging the memorial banners that are around our city. They look great. And so thank you so much for the work there. It's a great memorial to our service personnel. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And self-revoked reports. My name is Director Booth.
Good evening. Two items for me tonight. The first item is in, pertains to a resolution in two thousand twenty-three dash fifteen, that would be the tax budget for two thousand twenty-four. This is an annual state requirement that we are to do, which in essence states how much millage we will be allowing for tax purposes for the next fiscal year. So that's within section one of the attached documents of the resolution. Overall, we will be allowing the same number of mill village at five point nine mills for two thousand twenty-four as we currently are doing. So our property tax rate will stay the same. Within that five point nine, there has been a shift within as regards to what each fund will be receiving. So in order to eliminate a potential fund balance at the fire pension fund at the end of two thousand twenty-four, we will be shifting point one mill from the police pension funds to the fire pension fund and another point three mills from the street lighting funds to the fire pension fund. Each point one mills represents approximately thirty-five thousand dollars in revenue. So we're taking away from the police and street lighting funds, because those funds are generally healthier than the fire pension funds in order to eliminate any potential fund balance at the end of two thousand twenty-four. Overall, five point nine mills is consistent with the current. The second item for me tonight is just a brief overview of the April general fund financial reports. Revenues, overall revenues, thirty-eight percent of estimated amount and seventeen percent on the prior year due to an increase in income tax revenue as well as interest revenue, pretty much in line with the prior three months of this fiscal year. Overall commitments are forty-five percent of the budget amount and eight percent more than compared to April twenty twenty-two. So overall positive news on the revenue side as we are trending higher than budget through the first third of the fiscal year. Also, we have received our unit distributions for May. Total distributions are above one million dollars more than May of two thousand twenty-two. There was a substantial amount of non-recurring revenue that we received in May that we did not receive in May of two thousand twenty-two, which contributes to that. So excluding that, we are four hundred forty-three thousand dollars more than May twenty twenty-two due to a strong withholding accounts for a gain of four hundred fifteen thousand dollars. So channel verified news on income tax front for May that she'll see as part of the May financial report. Much of it resulting to non-recurring revenue on the net profit side, also strong gains in the withholding side as well. So that is my report for tonight.
Thank you. Under Old Business Tonight, we have ordered two thousand twenty-three dash ten. This is up for third reading and adoption. Establishing the position of Recreation Coordinator. Just to remind residents, this position is part of the new employee layout for Recreation Department, which will kind of umbrella over the Senior Center as well as Recreation Center and programs. This position will be a union position within the Council's name. Any comments or questions? To a job? To a job? Kevin Koochi, yes. Aaron Dorasky?
Yes.
Kevin Kancy?
Yes.
Sue Brody? Yes. Megan Sharky? Yes. Steven Coyle?
Yes.
Amy Seltzer?
Yes.
Under New Business Tonight, we have resolution two thousand twenty-three dash fifteen. This is just on first reading tonight, adopting the tax budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. And Director Booth just read into the record the updates on this in his finance director report. Finally, tonight, we have ordered two thousand twenty-three dash eleven, which is on first reading, but administration is looking to adopt the resumption of the rules to approve the two thousand twenty-three replacement pages to Brooklyn, codified ordinances, and declaring emergency. And this is something we do every year along with our local legislation. There are quite a few state law changes that need to be added to keep our code compliant with the state law. There are forty-four sections affected, so this is a large update for us this year. Can you spell system rules? To system rules, Kevin Koochi, yes. Aaron Dorasky?
Yes.
Kevin Kancy?
Yes.
Sue Brody? Yes. Megan Sharky? Yes. Steven Coyle?
Yes.
Amy Seltzer?
Yes.
To a job? Kevin Koochi?
Yes.
Aaron Dorasky?
Yes.
Kevin Kancy?
Yes.
Sue Brody? Yes. Megan Sharky? Yes. Steven Coyle?
Yes.
Amy Seltzer?
Yes.
At this time, we will have the second public session. Anyone in the audience with anything to say for the good and well of the City of Brooklyn, please stop now. State's name and address. You will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments divided and equal.
A busy week, so I'll keep it very short. First off, the signage on four eighty, I have a question about the bad sign.
I know we know he wants to look.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was very respectful. I apologize. The signage on four eighty, facing four eighty is because the city, who's the city logo, but decided facing T V would be compliant, deserve compliance for that? And if not, I would suggest that we have a very talented worker that makes these banners. We could use that area, put banners up for Police Memorial League, Firefighter Memorial, City of Men. It's, the sign is basically there, so I think the city state plan, the mayor, the signage on West Sixty-Sixth with the overlay. I get a lot of calls that the sign says the end of May, May twenty-ninth, that it would be done. You said the end of June, so I just, to avoid a bunch of phone calls from myself, I just like to know that they, because they were there, they rounded down the, I'm not complaining, just say the fact. Thank you.
I understand the ground measures is forty-four, forty-four out of the drive. I have a question for the mayor, I think, of the police. I also operate, if I was to rest around, within the City of Brooklyn, and sense the Brook Park Road and Ridge Road traffic. What are we doing with that? I mean, you take, I was actually on truck on Friday, and it took me from four thirty-two to five fifteen to go south on Tideman, to pump it up, to get on four eighty's. When I drive to work in the morning, I get on Ridge Road and you have auxiliaries that are just hanging there. Now when I come home sometimes, really, they're just sitting in a patrol car. Is that what we're supposed to be doing? Are we supposed to be helping with the motorway traffic? I mean, you guys have known that Ridge Road was going to be done. It was terrible last year. Now with Brook Road, Brook Park Road, it's a virtual parking lot. Something has to be done, and it has to be done now. I have customers that are complaining because my drivers cannot get there to make their deliveries. I have also another question. When you're getting off the four eighty, the signs on the freeway say they don't trust the road to go to T V. Is that just like a suggestion or is that something? Because I've reached out, is there a control or they don't know anything of it? They just call the signs are there that everyone can put them? But you have semis that are getting off the bridge to going westbound to turn south and they're standing right there, right? So it just backs up, the same thing with Tideman. I mean, it's ridiculous. Is there something that's going to be done? Are the auxiliaries supposed to be directing traffic? They're just sitting in patrol cars and doing nothing. I'm out, I'm out of the city all day. My first one day, I've been keeping high on my drivers that I have. And it's getting worse and worse every day.
What is your question in the public session?
Hi, Eric Duryme, forty-two oh one, Don Cliff. Just wanted to also congratulate the firefighters that are doing the force. And one thing in particular, I think about a lot of the things that are going on. It's great as a resident to see all of the events and the things that are going in the community and how important the community is. Very glad to see some of the things that were on all the Facebook pages and I see things with graduation and so forth. One of the other things that I wanted to mention as well is that there's an event coming up at the end of June, which is going to be happening at the gazebo called the Big Band Blowout, which is a free event for the community. There's also one at the end of July, on July thirtieth, that is going to be a concert as well. The question that I had was based on the, um, the work that Pansy could maybe do with the old city hall. How will that affect anything going on with the gazebo or with that area as they're doing their deconstruction of the building? And if there was anything, I think that's it. Thank you.
Evening, everyone. There are deals, seven four thirty-nine. What was the sign on the Ford? What was done with the four G Ds? Also, the back of the sign would drop a lot of other money as well. The other thing is that the height, the reason it's always lovely and nice, so the cars are nice to be traveled. But it said higher, so you get to see it more. Regarding Memorial Day, I remember very well, I graduated Brooklyn nineteen seventy-three. And in the early seventies, I was looking out the window, going, hold your glass, hold your glass. Nice sixty-seven, great hot gun, G T S, nice performance ride, the all-star man, he's a little bit, wow, nice ride, nice ride. No, that ain't crazy, but one way.
Another, I remember one way, I put the original on the shelf. And it was right around seventy-three. And I told the young, I gave them a comparison power, who was seeing this in the Brooklyn lot? They go, yeah, sort of a sad one, it was just like some guy, and you get that. Remember that bad time as well.
My apologies once again, Eric Jurey, for any delay on time, but I was also going to be working with J M R for the ribbon cutting ceremony for some of the sound things. I've just noticed some sound issues as well with cutting out and so forth. So I wanted to volunteer to help anyway with any of the sound or audio things that are going on. Obviously, with the new building and everything going on, there's probably just quick tweaks that we can do to fix it. So thank you.
Let's all start backwards. Mr. Dio, in regards to the TVs for the day rooms. There are four separate day rooms in the prison. There's four different quadrant, the day room for a set of two cells, the day room for a set of two cells, the day room for a set of two cells, the day room for a set of four cells. There is one day room in each, one TV in each of those day rooms, so it's not. As far as the height of the signs, we can't read them now, the height that they are. There is going to be some other signs going up around the city. Late fall, optimistically, right? Mr. Rowan, the bids going out for that, or some other wave fundings, or excuse me, gateway signs, and the other parts, I think those actually will be a little bit higher.
And then, and the colors?
Same color scheme.
Be able to see easily?
Same color scheme as the ones that we have.
Yeah, I'm not the only person, but they're easily recognizable when they're going up. I like some signs and some cities.
In regards to the sound issues, this is just a temporary solution. We're actually missing a main component due to the sound system has been on backward for here. And we're hoping to have that in next month. So this is just temporary, yes, our submission that we're having this evening. But I told them we have to have that by tonight, and they were able to get it done, so I appreciate that. As far as the Disneybo, the construction will have no effect on that. We're operating the Disneybo just like any other summer for rentals. The majority of the construction will actually take place on the footprint of where the current building is and directly right behind the police station. So it shouldn't have any effect on the park. In regards to the traffic, I'm originally Brooklyn, I'll let the chief address that in just a moment if he doesn't mind doing that. We have had some discussion to answer the question of the backside of the signs. We've had a couple of different ideas that have been talked about. We haven't made a final decision yet, but that, both of those, that is a good suggestion. We'll talk about that as well, Mr. Snyder. As far as the sign on West Sixty-Sixth Street, the end of June date that I got was from our engineer. If those signs are signed, they'll be finished by the end of May twenty-ninth. I would be confident that they are ready to check them out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all those questions, though. Chief, do you can maybe address the traffic issues and also the trucks going to Tideman as opposed to Riddick?
Yes, I know Tideman's bad. I've traveled with myself. Some days a little bit better than others, especially the first two days that they set up the traffic zone on Brook Park Road. It was a backup. Part of that is one hundred thirtieth exits closed, so you got traffic exiting Tideman Road, and you got people avoiding Ridge Road exiting Tideman Road. As far as the auxiliary used to go, the auxiliary is being paid by the construction company to protect the work zone and to help them set up the work zone and move it, they need it. The city gets reimbursed for the time that the police cruiser is used. So they're not working for the city, they're working for the construction guys at that point. I have no good advice for the traffic, other than try to make your time around rush hours. That's when it gets bad, especially on Tideman Road right now. Ridge Road is actually moving better than it did last year at this time. I think I think that, so. I don't think there's a long-term answer, other than hopefully Ridge Road gets done soon than Brook Park Road.
Thank you. And it is, it is bad. There's no doubt about that. I've driven, I purposely driven through there a couple of times to see it. It is frustrating. Brook Park Road is a state project. Ridge Road is a county project. The West one thirty is a project is a state project. So we just, the city just kind of gets stuck in the middle trying to figure things out. There's not a whole lot we can do about it. We did, we were able to coordinate with the state, with the county, to make sure that Brook Park Road construction did not intersect with Ridge Road while they were still doing that. That really would have been worse. What about the, Chief, the signs that say no trucks on?
Yeah, that's news to me. I'll look into that some further. I don't know if anything, nobody lets, no.
Yes, that's a very tight.
They're very huge, light as signs, I'd say. No trucks or roads, get off of here.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's a temporary restriction is kind of more of a suggestive than it is unfortunate.
Can you answer that question for the chief and bring it back? So auxiliary officers, I understand the whole process where we get reimbursed, but is there nothing they can do with, for example, I know one of the issues I've seen up there and I get some residents complaints on is when people are blocking the intersection.
So to fully coordinate a traffic direction up there, you're going to need an officer at Brook Park Road. You're going to need an officer at Westbound, Eastbound, and probably going back to North. But that's, that's, that's a big undertaking to do on a daily basis. And traffic signals will reset before the project according to a traffic engineer's suggestion to accommodate the traffic levels and anticipatively use a new system. My auxiliary is not allowed to a traffic engineer's signalization after that project.
No, I'm referring to people who purposely pull into the intersection when they shouldn't be. And then with a lot of changes.
Yeah, we get up there, try to enforce, and sometimes it's more trouble than it's worth trying to pull somebody over into the work zone.
I understand.
We're aware of it. We're aggressively writing people on the side streets over there because residents over in that area, Mr. Rich, are complaining about speakers stopped by the, by Rich. So we have daily details that get those guys over there to function correctly.
Thank you.
Question that I have, and I know it's out of the chief's hands and probably be back in the mayor's hands. We find a way, we can't, I don't know if you want to say find a way, but we've got excuses why we can't put officers there. Mayor, can you contact their project, I don't care what state, county, or wherever else, and ask them during those peak hours if that traffic is being backed up to have officers there? I mean, we have residents that are either running businesses or can't get across this country. I mean, sit, so. It's a problem. I've gotten calls, I've got plenty of calls about Ridge Road already. And they are seeing those auxiliary sitting in the car. And I know they're being paid by the construction company, but there's got to be something done because it's not going to get me about, you got Brook Park, like the chief says, one hundred thirtieth is closed, which I don't get that, why they closed one hundred thirtieth down when they know they got a problem on this and should have been one budget at a time? They're closing everything down, and you can't move. You just can't move. So since they want to close everything down and we can't move, then they need to hear some police officers over there paying them to get it to them. One way or the other, something has to be given. You cannot go on shutting the city down from every direction, and that's what they've done. They shut it down from Ridge Road, they shut it down from Brook Park, they closed up one hundred thirtieth. Down by the tracks, they're doing construction over there, so the traffic can't move down the one hundred thirtieth tracks over there. You can't move eastbound, the other end. So it's just going to get worse. So maybe if you could contact the appropriate authorities and ask them, say, hey, look, you have jammed up the whole area. We need some help on getting some officers there to run this traffic during peak hours.
I can't take it to the airport.
Thank you.
Anybody else on council there, directors that we can add? Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
To adjourn? Kevi Gucci?
Yes.
Aaron Goraski?
Yes.
Kevin Tamski?
Yes.
Sue Brody?
Yes.
Megan Sharky?
Yes.
Steven Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Selber?
Yes.